I hereby call the Youth Commission meeting to order on Monday, September 16th, 2024 at 6:03 PM. Recording secretary, can you please conduct roll call?
Yes, Youth Commissioner Pham?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Paradias?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Vice Chair Benitez?
Here.
And Chair Malfavan?
Here.
Records show you have six members present. Chair Malfavan, you have quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have the Brown Act training presentation. I invite Brandon Salvadira and Jonathan Martinez from the City Attorney's Office forward to present.
We have to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If able, will you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Next, we have the Brown Act training presentation. I invite Brandon Salvadira and Jonathan Martinez from the City Attorney's Office forward to present.
Good evening, Youth Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us today. As mentioned, my name is Jonathan Martinez. I am an Assistant City Attorney here with the City of Santana.
And I am Brandon Salvatera. I'm a Deputy City Attorney here with the City of Santa Ana.
So we have been asked to come and give a presentation to you Commissioners with regard to the Ralph M. Brown Act. It is a very significant and important law as it pertains to the way in which governmental bodies are to function in the scope of full transparency and how they are to behave and conduct themselves with regard to public information, public transparency, the way the public perceives them, and the information that the public has given access to because you are a governmental body that has been appointed by various city council members. And so this is, training could be a little dry here and there, but there are very important aspects of it that will go to, again, how this body should function both here within the meeting and outside of the meeting as well. So with that, we can go ahead and get started. Just a little disclaimer, because we're attorneys here, that the following information is provided for Commissioner training purposes. The following does not constitute legal advice, and we just want to say thank you again for your cooperation, your willingness to be here and listen to the information that we're looking to pass along. Next slide, please. We have three training goals today. The first is to explain the public nature of the meetings. That's under the Brown Act. The second one is to discuss the meeting procedures. And the third goal is to strategize on how to implement best practices moving forward. Next slide. I'm going to speak as to the first goal, which is to explain the open and public nature of the meetings under the Ralph M. Brown Act. And just a little background on this particular law, you know, when I say act, what we're talking about is we're talking about a law or a set of laws that have been enacted by the California Legislature. So when you hear me mention the Brown Act, we're also, we're talking about codified law by the legislature. The Ralph M. Brown Act is, oh, thank you, is a California law, and it was originally enacted in 1953. The key to the Brown Act is a single sentence, which in summary is that all meetings shall be open and public except when the Brown Act authorizes otherwise. And we'll get into that a little bit, that there are some limited exceptions when the conversations that Commissioners or council members have can actually be restricted from the public, but it is a very, very narrow carve out. One way to think of this is that the government's house is being made of glass. The curtains may be drawn only to further the public's interest. That's kind of the closed session exception that we were talking about, but for the most part, the curtains are open. The public has a right to access and see what it is that this legislative body does. Next slide, please. But I guess the first question we really have to analyze when we talk about open and public meetings and what the public has the access to view is what actually constitutes a meeting, right? What is the definition of a meeting? And at least under the Brown Act, a meeting is any gathering of a majority, a majority of the members of this body to hear or discuss any item of city business or potential city business. We talk about city business, it's kind of more thinking of it in terms of like, say, the council members' city business. For purposes of this commission, you can think of it as the commission's business, right? Because the commission is a more narrow scope of items and business than, say, what city council would address. So think of city business as synonymous with commission business. Any meeting, again, where there's a majority of you that are looking to discuss city business or potential city business, it requires a notice, an agenda, and a time and a place for public comment. That's exactly what happened here. And then a notice went out, an agenda went out with various items on it. There was a precise time, there was a precise place. And again, what that all goes back to is this idea that if any member of the public wanted to come here today and see what it is, what kind of business you were transacting, that they would have ample opportunity to do so. And so again, that's really what is at the heart of an agenda. Unless a majority, unless a majority gathering falls into one of the Brown Act's exceptions to the definition of a meeting, it will be considered a meeting subject to the Act. And so what this kind of means is that for purposes, at least in terms of you serving as a Commissioner, is if you were to ever find yourself in a position where, well, you only have six right now, because I understand there's a vacancy, but let's assume you were fully staffed with seven. If you ever found yourself in a position where four of you ended up at the same dinner table somewhere, technically, that could be considered a meeting under the Brown Act and potentially a violation because there was no, there was no notice given to the public, there was no agenda. And so, you know, there's certainly wiggle room, and like we said, there's exceptions, but just know that in those instances where a quorum, where a majority could meet and possibly talk about city business without that agenda, that there could be a violation. And so we want to work really hard to avoid those types of scenarios. Next slide, please. Meetings subject to the Brown Act are not limited to face-to-face gatherings. So it's important to note that meetings can also include any communication medium or device through which a majority of the body discusses, deliberates, or takes action on a business item outside of a noticed meeting. So what you can think of, you can think of emails, text messages, social media posts, or other messages, Zoom meetings, FaceTime meetings. Again, the fact that, I guess I should say, the distinction between being in person and all being in the same room is it's a distinction without a difference. If you're all on the same FaceTime call, if four of you are on a FaceTime call, it doesn't mean that that meeting's not occurring because you still have that ability to discuss business and to discuss things amongst yourself. The fact that it's not occurring in the same room when you're all present at the same time is irrelevant, again, for purposes of the Brown Act. Next slide, please. The Brown Act requires local government business to be conducted at open and public meetings. It applies to governmental body of a local agency, so that's the city council we talked about, or any commission, which this Youth Commission is, committee or board that is created by formal action of the city council, which is what gave rise to this Youth Commission existing, was the city council, in essence, created this commission by way of ordinance and has given you the authority to operate within the scope that has been vested to you, again, through that very ordinance. This does not apply to ad hoc meetings with less than a quorum. I'm not certain, and this would be potentially a better question for Director Scott, but I'm not certain whether this commission would foresee ad hoc-type meetings. Maybe you will, maybe you won't. We can get into that a little more, but those are, again, a little narrow carve out with regard to what is considered a meeting and what isn't. Next slide, please. So, again, talking about these exceptions, one way to think of this is, we're now talking about meetings that occur when there's less than a quorum. You have things like standing committees. In examples of that, you know, it pertains to continuing subject matter. They have no end date. There's longevity to them, and they are subject to the Brown Act. That's with a standing committee. Again, these are kind of very narrow exceptions. The ad hoc committee that I mentioned is restricted to a specific task. So if this commission were ever tasked with addressing a very, very narrow issue that's very limited in time, there's a fixed starting point, a fixed end date, it's an issue that you're asked to address and opine on, you could have an ad hoc committee, which would consist of less than a majority of you. Again, it exists for a short period of time. It exists for a specific task. It would devolve immediately upon the completion of that task, and those would not be subject to the Brown Act. Again, this is exception-based, and it is a situation that's for a short period of time. Here's an issue we want looked at. You're going to provide an opinion on it, less than a quorum. You kind of get in, you get out, provide your opinion, and then that ad hoc committee dissolves. That is an exception where city business can be discussed. Again, ad hoc committee doesn't last long, and it also is less than a quorum. Perfect, thank you. So let's talk about just individual contacts with the Brown Act. The Brown Act does not apply to individual contacts between a member of the body and any other person. So conference call or telephone call or other conversation with any other person, including staff, so any employee of the city, constituents, just members of the public, the press and others, it does not, it does not address or restrict that level of communication. Again, because those people you're communicating with, you're not communicating, you may be talking about business, but the person you're conveying that information to has no ability to effectuate policy or business because, again, this is a member of the public, this is a member of the city, this is not another one of you Commissioners, it's somebody outside of this body, and that would not be any type of Brown Act violation. But it's important to note that individual contact attacks cannot be used to do in stages what would be prohibited in one step. And this gets into the concept of what is a serial meeting. This is, and we're going to talk a lot about it, the serial meeting is a situation where you're using proxies, in a sense, or you're using others to communicate to other members of the body in an improper way that would be discussing business kind of in stages. So we'll talk a little bit about that here. As I stated, there is a prohibition of a "serial" meeting under the Brown Act, and it kind of defines it as a meeting of the members of a legislative body shall not, outside of a meeting, use a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body. So it's all, it's looking at, you know, what is the intent here? Is the intent to involve others to communicate with other Commissioners? Is it to try and develop a collective concurrence, right? To develop some sort of collective strategy that exists outside of the conversations that you would have right up here on this dais? Issues with a serial meeting, and we are going to get into specific examples, a few of the most common, is that, again, going back to the glass house scenario, right? The fact that the Brown Act's entire purpose is for public transparency is that it deprives the public of an opportunity to observe and participate in decision-making. That's the whole reason, the purpose for the agenda, for the public comment, for the public availability to come and witness what you're doing here on a monthly or bimonthly basis. I'm not sure how often you meet. These serial meetings can occur in a few ways. The most common are what's called either a daisy chain or a hub-and-spoke sequence. So a daisy chain, if you think of it, you think of the concept of a chain, right? It's like Member A contacts Member B and says, hey, this is what I think about this issue. What do you think about this issue? Conversation. Now, ordinarily, under the Brown Act, that would not be a violation. You are allowed to have contact and communications with each other, but not at a quorum level, right? So when Member B then contacts C and relays what A told him, and now B and C are talking about it, and then C turns around and contacts D and does the exact same thing, what you have now is you just have four Commissioners, so a quorum or a majority of the Commissioners have now discussed an item of business. They just did it in a unique way, right? They didn't do it face-to-face or via Zoom or FaceTime. What they did was they just used each other to relay that information and have conversations about it. So that is a very, very common way of that there could be a Brown Act violation, which is that daisy chain serial meeting. The other type is the hub-and-spoke. You think of like a wheel with the hub in the center and the spokes leading out to the rubber part of the wheel. It's that A just acts as the conduit to relay all the information to the others. A calls B, A calls C, A calls D, and so on and so forth. Again, what you have there is you have a situation where A just acted as a conduit to essentially conduct city business by calling everybody individually. So again, we want to be very careful with the way that we communicate with each other about city business. And I've always said this, and I think Brandon feels the same way, the easiest way to avoid any pitfalls is just have your communications about city business right up here on the dais. You guys, you guys can interact and communicate with each other and glean everybody's ideas and thoughts from each other right here, right? When you're discussing an actual business item. So again, the easiest way to avoid any type of Brown Act violation is just talk about it here in council chambers when the item comes before you. It's just, it's the cleanest, easiest way to avoid any possible issues. Next slide. I think this was just a little graphic of daisy chain. If you see A to B to C to D, and then just the hub-and-spoke graphic there. Next slide, please. Just talking a little bit more about serial meetings, direct contacts about city business with fellow members are the clearest means by which a serial meeting can occur. Talked about that. If one participant discloses the views of the other member to a third or fourth member, again, that's the serial meetings occurred. It can either be daisy chain or hub-and-spoke. And this is just, I think, cementing something I just mentioned. The best way to avoid is to refrain from discussing agency business honestly with anybody, with any other member of this body or sharing views of others outside these meetings. So we actually just recently updated our Brown Act training to address a new amendment. It's a pretty recent amendment to the Brown Act, and it came by way of Assembly Bill 992. And it had some really interesting revisions to what would constitute violations, and it really focused on social media and the advent and the rise of the social media implications that could occur. And so really, in a nutshell, that while Commissioners are permitted to comment on social media to answer public questions, right, to provide information or seek information, these new amendments clarify that a Commissioner may not respond directly to any social media communication made, posted, or shared by a fellow Commissioner on an issue that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of their body. This includes the use of digital-like icons and other similar icons. And let's kind of unpack that a little bit, because I know that there's a lot that went into that statement. And again, that's pretty much plucked verbatim from the actual statute. Again, if we're going back to this idea that Commissioners cannot discuss amongst each other or share ideas amongst each other in the setting that exists beyond the quorum, right? Because it would be an impermissible meeting. If a Commissioner were to state, this is my opinion as to issue X, okay? Fill it in, whatever it may be. And it's within your subject matter jurisdiction as Youth Commissioners. It's not with regard to police matters or maybe even with the budget, but let's say that this Commissioner says, this is my opinion as to the issue, issue X, it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body, meaning what you are here to address and talk about. That act in and of itself is permitted. There's absolutely nothing wrong with taking to Instagram or Facebook or what have you and posting that. The issue now becomes, and what this law is saying, is that if another Commissioner liked it, comments on it, shares it, what you're essentially doing now is you're publishing, you are really publishing your opinion now as another Commissioner with regard to that matter, and you are, in a sense, transacting city business because you are now publishing to the public what your thoughts are, not just to the public, but also to the other Commissioners, what your thoughts are on a particular issue. And so that's where, at that moment in time, what the Legislature tried to address here by way of AB 992, is they tried to create a situation where you're not allowed to do that because, in essence, like I said, you are having that meeting. You're conducting a meeting where your views are being, a Commissioner's views are being put out there, and another Commissioner comes along and likes it. Now, everybody knows they're in a concurrence, and are they potentially developing a joint concurrence that could affect the legislative outcome of what you do up here? And so the Legislature, the California Legislature, trying to make it very clear that a Commissioner can still post on social media, they can reach out to the public for whatever information they want, you can share your thoughts and your opinions on things, but the way that other Commissioners react now to that post is what's limited. So when you see your Commissioners post something, you can look at it, you can take it in, you can analyze it, you can think about it, but AB 992 is very clear that now legislative bodies, other members are not allowed to like it, disseminate it, share it, heart it, smiley face it, whatever exists out there because that would now be a violation. And what's really interesting about this law and the way that it's written is that, remember, previous Brown Act violations had to do with the quorum, right? It had to do with four or more of you discussing city business. This is an interesting update to the law because it's saying, it doesn't, you don't need to have three or more, or sorry, you don't need to have four or more liking a Commissioner's post. It's just one. So if just one other Commissioner likes it, shares it, all of, you know, the laundry list of things that I mentioned, you could have a Brown Act violation. In fact, you would have a Brown Act violation there. So again, best practices, each of you should individually use social media as a tool to the extent that it's available to you, and it can be helpful to you individually as a Commissioner, but best practice is look at what your other Commissioners are posting. Again, analyze it, think about it, internalize it, but don't react to it because the reaction and publishing your reaction to the rest of the world with regard to what that one Commissioner said is a violation now under AB 992. City Attorney's Office really encourages inquiries, you know, if properly requested through staff. So I know that this is kind of complex, and we're always here to help, and there is a process by which questions and legal questions and inquiries can come to our office. They just have to go through the proper channels through staff, and we do encourage that. So please don't hesitate to reach out. Perfect. Talk a little bit about communications with staff now in serial meetings. So this is another way serial meetings can occur and involve staff, so we want to be cognizant of that, and that is that, you know, members of a body may consult with city staff outside of a meeting for questions or information about a matter. Staff and Commissioners should be very careful not to disclose the comments or the position of any other member. And I, we have very professional staff here at the city, and I don't foresee that being an issue or a problem. It's just something to be aware of, that we're not putting ourselves in a position where staff and the Commissioners are interacting with each other, and there could be comments being disclosed by one Commissioner to another. So it's not an issue that I foresee happening, but it's just something that always kind of just keep in the back of your head. Next slide, please. This is the last slide on Goal One, and it's just with regard to exceptions to that Brown Act meeting. Again, so what, we've talked a lot about what constitutes a meeting, right? There's properly noticed meetings, there's serial meetings, that's daisy chain, hub-and-spoke. There's now basically social media-type meetings that have their own rules with regard to what you may say or do on social media, but there are exceptions to what would be a meeting when you do have a quorum there. So if there are seminar and conferences that are open to the public and are of general interest, a quorum of you could be there and attend those, provided you don't discuss city business. You could actually be sitting in the same room together if there's a seminar or conference, again, that's open to the public and it's of general interest. What does this always go back to? The public, right? The public's ability to observe what it is that you're doing and how you're doing it. So in this exception, we can see, all right, all seven of you could attend a conference, as long as that conference is open to the public, then it's not an issue. Another exception is community meetings, again, that are open and publicized. Goes back to the public. Does the public have the ability to have some sort of oversight in terms of how you're meeting? And again, all of these exceptions are, yeah, the seven of you can be there, it can be public, but you also can't be discussing city business. You're just kind of existing in the same room for a purpose outside of what this body meets for and what its scope is. Meetings of other legislative bodies. So we have a city council meeting tomorrow night. All six, I know you have the vacancy. I keep saying seven, but I know there's six. All six of you could attend and sit right next to each other tomorrow night and attend the city council meeting, and it would not be a Brown Act violation, provided you don't talk about city business. So that's another exception. Social or ceremonial occasions, that's another exception. Think of it like ribbon cutting, right? A new park or a new playground is unveiled, and there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony. That would certainly be something that all of you could attend. It's open and it's publicized, but again, what's the catch? You can all attend as long as you don't discuss city business together. And that's the caveat at the end, is that if a majority are present and any of these cannot discuss any items of city business or also meeting, pretty much results. Next slide. With that, before I turn it over to Brandon, I know there was a lot to unpack with that, and you don't necessarily have to have all your questions ready right now. You know, like I said, there's, I'm open and available to answer questions, but does anybody have anything right now that they would like to?
Talking about social media interactions, it's just kind of funny, but does it also count, like, if a topic not relating to city business, like, let's say it's a cat video, can I interact with that story or no?
Sorry, can you repeat what it's relating to? Or you're just saying it doesn't relate in any way to what this commission does here?
Yeah.
You can absolutely react to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it focuses on the scope of this commission and what they call, what the law calls the subject matter jurisdiction of this body. And so again, if, and I don't presume to know everything that this commission addresses, but if there's something that's just squarely outside, or it's about SAT scores or what have you, then absolutely, there's no restriction on your ability to interact with these other members based on that. Anything else? Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Hi there. Thank you very much, Jonathan, for that presentation. And again, if you do have any question you think of later, you can go ahead and submit those through staff. Staff can submit those to us through the inquiry process, okay? So I'm going to go over the meeting procedures, and if we can go- And if we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you very much. And so we'll start off with the chairperson. So the chairperson, aka the chair, is elected by the commission. The chairperson shall have the responsibility for informing the city council and/or the executive director of the commission, in this case, Hawk Scott, of the actions or inactions and the reasons therefore. Next slide, please. So the basic format for discussing agenda items, first and foremost, examine your bylaws. And you can ask for a copy of your bylaws from your recording secretary. Generally speaking, the chair will announce an agenda item. They'll clearly state the subject. And then the chair will invite for a presentation from the staff on the report on the item and including any recommendation of that item. Right, please. So basic format for discussing agenda items, again, is going to be, the next step will be, the chair will ask the commissioners if they have any questions on the item for clarification. Commissioners can then ask questions of the staff who presented that item. The chair can then invite public comment on the item if it is on the agenda and is being heard as a public hearing. Now, all public comment on the respective item is heard at this time, and then the public hearing will be closed by the chair. If the matter is not on the agenda as a public hearing, then any member of the public can speak about this in the general public comment period preceding the business. Now, public comment may be limited to three minutes for each speaker. And at the end of the public comments, the chair should announce that the public input has concluded. I would also add the caveat that you'll have in-person speakers. You could have Zoom speakers. It may even be written comments that are submitted pursuant to the commission that may include some sort of timetable. So that is something else to consider. Another thing I would point out, too, is that you have to open the public comment before you can hear from the public. Next slide, please. So the next, the chair will then invite a motion on the item, announce the name of the commissioner making that motion. Then the chair would invite a second to that motion and announce the name of the commissioner who seconds that motion. After that, a motion is made and seconded. The chair would then repeat the motion or ask the maker of the motion, or could ask the commission secretary to repeat it. Then the chair would invite discussion of the motion. And if that discussion ends up becoming lengthy, they should repeat the motion to make sure that everyone understands. And I would say it's probably best practice just to go ahead and make it clear again, regardless of the length of the discussion, just to make sure that everyone is clear on what they're voting on or what the action's being taken on. Next, the chair would ask for a vote on the item. Yes or aye, no or nay, or abstain. The chair will then announce the result of the vote and what action, if any, is taken on the item. Slide, please. Another thing that can happen is a motion to amend. And any member of the commission can make a motion by saying, I move to amend the motion by, and basically stating what the amendment would be. Usually, this would be something, like, for instance, if you are going to have, if the motion would be that you're going to have a fundraiser on September 30th. And then another commissioner says, I want to amend that motion to have it on the 1st of October rather than September 30th. It's the same motion, essentially, it's just a different date, right? So it's the same one you're amending it. If the motion to amend passes, then you would, I apologize, I already got ahead of myself. The motion, the member would need a second to amend the motion. The motion is then debatable. Unless the motion itself is not debatable, that would occur only in very specific procedural circumstances, as in a motion to adjourn or a motion to limit debate. Those are not debatable. But other than that, most motions are debatable. An amended motion itself can always be amended, and a majority vote is needed. And also, too, this will come into play later, an amended motion can always be reconsidered. Getting back to my example, the motion to amend from September 30th to October 1st has been made. It's been seconded. It would then have a majority vote. If it is passed, then you would go back to the first motion, which is to have your fundraiser on October 1st. Next slide, please. Next would be a reconsider, a motion to reconsider. Now, a member can reconsider a motion by saying that I have, I move to reconsider the vote on that item. Now, this can be made only by a member on the prevailing side, which changed their position. Also be noted that a motion to reconsider generally can only be made in the same meeting where the original vote was taken. And a member would need a second member to reconsider the motion or reconsider the action. And in that case, the second can be from either side, the prevailing party or the non-pervailing party. The reconsideration of a motion is debatable only if the main question has not been debated yet. That could be specific to, that's going to be specific to the motion. Reconsideration of a motion may not be amended, and a majority vote is needed. Reconsideration cannot be further reconsidered. So you can't have a motion reconsidered after the motion reconsideration has already been heard. So you can't flip-flop on the same issue times in the same meeting. Next slide, please. Next is public participation. Now, the Brown Act requires two types of public comment periods. First, you have a general audience public comment during which the public may comment on any non-agenda item. Now, comments pertaining to a specific agenda item must be heard prior to the consideration of the item. Discussion of non-agenda items. There are limited exceptions. So members may briefly respond to public comments or questions and provide a referral to staff or to other resources. Members may ask questions for clarification. Members may report on their own activities. Members may request staff to report back on a matter or issue. Are there any questions? Right, thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to Jonathan.
So we are reaching the end. We're on to goal number three here, which is to strategize on how to implement best practices. Just very basic kind of general stuff, but worth talking about nevertheless. Courtesy and decorum. One person has the floor at a time during these meetings. The chair first recognizes each speaker is generally the way you would want discussions to unfold. Discussion focuses on agenda item, not on personalities. And the chair has the right to cut off discussion that is too personal, too loud, or too rude. I don't foresee that being a problem with any of you, but just to throw it out there. Maintaining civility in meetings. Please do not attack or question the motives of other members. Limit misunderstandings, get the facts, use a fair process. Listen with an open mind and focus discussion on actual agenda items. Next step, please. Some pointers and tips. Do not engage in two-way dialogue with the audience. Prepare in advance of the meeting by reviewing the agenda and the staff reports. If you have a specific question or concern, contact staff in advance of the meeting so they can prepare to address them at the meeting or provide clarification. I think that's an important one. Again, you're not limited in your ability to reach out to staff. So, you know, oftentimes, staff won't necessarily have the answer if they first hear your question for them, you know, right here at 6:40 on the night of your particular meeting and with a particular item. So if you do have questions, feel free to reach out to staff to try and get clarity on them or to give staff the opportunity to actually research it a little bit and get you the right answer you're looking for. And closing comments. I mean, just enjoy your time as a youth commissioner. You all should be very proud, and your family should be proud. And, you know, you provide a very valuable service to the city, to the city council and to staff. And we just congratulate you and want you to just enjoy your time. Thank you. Any questions about anything now? Okay.
Oh, we have one question.
Oh, sorry.
Can I use my computer up here to, like, let's say if it's like an agenda item and such? Is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you.
And again, always feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Brandon and Jonathan, for the presentation. Next, we have the public comments section. This is the time for the commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional requests for speaker cards once we begin the public comments session. If you have not already, please submit your request to the recording secretary. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. To your speakers on Zoom, you must dial nine on your phone or click the button labeled Raise Your Hand. Now, to be in the speaker queue once public comments commence. Recording secretary, do we have any public speakers in person?
There are none at this time.
Do we have any public speakers on Zoom?
At this time, there are none.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar, items one and two. Commission members, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve items one and two of the consent calendar.
I second.
Motion by Pham and second by Benitez. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct roll call vote?
Yes, Youth Commission Member Pham?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Paradillas?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Munoz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benitez?
Yes.
Chair Mafavon? The vote is six ayes, zero nays. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the business calendar. Number three, Youth Commission bylaws revision to change regular meeting day and time. Included in the packet, there are revisions to this Youth Commission bylaws. I would like to recommend that the city council approve revisions to the Youth Commission bylaws to change the regular meeting day and time of the Youth Commission meetings and any other non-substantive updates. Is there a motion to have city council approve revisions to the Youth Commission bylaws?
I make a motion to have city council approve revisions to the Youth Commission bylaws to change the regular meeting day and time of the Youth Commission meetings and other non-substantive updates.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benitez. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct roll call vote?
Yes. Motion by Youth Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Vice Chair Benitez, to have the city council approve revisions to the Youth Commission bylaws. Youth Commission Member Pham?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Paradillas?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Munoz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benitez?
Yes.
Chair Mafavon?
Yes.
Vote is six ayes, zero nays. That motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to item number four of the business calendar. I will turn it over to Executive Director Hawk Scott to introduce the Parks, Recreation, and Community Service Agencies.
Thank you, Chairperson. Just want to say on that last one that we do plan a ticket to our next council on October 1st. And if it does get passed by council, we will meet October 21st. If not, it will be the same as another special meeting. So thank you for that. But just want to give you a little bit more information on that that we will try to put in our next council meeting and maybe invite you guys all to it, which might be kind of cool, so. All right, on to number four. So what we do in our Parks and Recreation Committee meeting is we have all our agencies that work together come up here and give a little stop report of what's going on. For my team, we'll have the recreation side as well as the Santa Ana Zoo side. And then we'll bring the library agency over here with Director Sternberg. And then from the Parks Maintenance Team, we bring over our Parks Superintendent and our Parks Planning Team. So they're all here now just to give you a brief introduction of who they are, what they do, and just a little clip note like that. And if it's okay with you guys, you know, we'd like to start scheduling them every meeting to where two of them come one time and the other two come the other time. And that's what we do in our Parks Recreation Commission meeting, if that's fine with you, you know, keep you up to date, get you to ask questions, get you to interact with them. And, you know, just let you know everything going on and all the things we do together. Cool, all right. So at this time, if, from our library services, if I can get Director Brian Sternberg to come up and give a spiel.
Good evening, members of the Youth Commission. Like Hawk said, my name is Brian Sternberg. I'm the Library Services Director here for the city of Santa Ana. And really, what my job is every day is to make sure that, you know, our library is providing quality programs and services as well as facilities to everyone that lives in the community and making sure that our services, our programs, and our facilities are just as good, if not better, than anyone else in the county or across the state. So that's really at the heart of what I do. We are a community building organization. We want to bring together people of all ages. We believe in multi-generational learning and recreation. So at the library, we are really the city's day-to-day programming engine. We have 50-plus, sometimes 100-plus programs every month. They're happening during the daytime. Most of these programs are not at the scale of 3,000, 4,000 people, but they're, you know, a storytime where, you know, 40 kids come in in the morning and do a craft and have a story read to them. Or they're teens, or people your age coming in in the afternoon and doing a STEM project where they learn how to use a 3D printer or make, you know, music using a Mac Pro or something like that. So we really try to offer a wide breadth of services to people of all ages. Programming's for seniors. We have something called Happy Hour. Not happy hour, but appy hour, where seniors can come in and learn how to use their computers and use their phones. And, you know, we help people every day with job help. You know, how to get on the internet, apply for a job, you know, and get more involved in their community, how to get on and register to vote. We do all those types of things every day at the library. And that's really sort of a baseline of what our service is all about. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have after this brief introduction. All right, then I will turn it back over to Hawk.
All right, thank you, Executive Director Sternberg. At this time, I'd like to bring up our Parks Planning Superstar, Susie Frigenic, as well as our Parks Superintendent, George Acevedo. These two do currently reside in Public Works, but they are still a part of us. And we work very close together, and they will each also tell you a little about what they do.
Good evening, commissioners. It's so nice to be here and to get a chance to meet you all. My name is Susie Frigenic. I oversee the Park Planning Division of the Park Services Section. So ultimately, what my team does is implement the Park's master plan. And there is a lot in there that has to do with capital improvements and improving and investing in our parks, looking for ways to grow the park system so that it keeps pace with the housing development in the city. I was just going to say, we look at, you know, we we look at both what we call current planning and long-range planning. Long range is more kind of zooming out, looking at the park system as a whole, seeing how amenities and parks are distributed throughout the city, what's out there, if there's equal distribution, where the gaps are, looking at ways that we could plug those gaps and site acquisitions. So that's more long range. Current planning is more in the Current planning is more in the now. They're capital improvement projects. We do a lot of the larger public works projects. They range anywhere from half a million to, our biggest project right now is nearly 30 million. It's the biggest project we've ever done in the park system. But we do what we call the front end of a project where we look for, we do concept planning, we look for funding, we hire consultants, architects, landscape architects, engineers to do the design. We see it through that process, sometimes needing to take it to the Building Department for permitting. We see it through the public bid process. And then, once we open bids, we package it all up and we turn it over to the Construction Engineering Department, and they actually execute the projects. But we are still involved day-to-day, doing site visits, making sure that it's getting constructed the way we intended for it to be. Some of the projects that we're working on right now, we're, there's a park that's under construction at Standard and McFadden Avenue. There is a future park at 10th and Flower Street that we're currently, it's in design. And there's a lot involved with that because we're taking nine parcels and part of a couple of streets. And we're putting them all together to make a park in an area that's park poor. It's going to involve a general plan amendment, it's going to involve rezoning, it's going to involve a lot merger, something called a street vacation. So we get involved in a lot of the nuts and bolts. There's a lot involved in doing a lot of these bigger projects, but they're really exciting and worth it, especially when you finally see them under construction. We have a really, really big, exciting project happening at Memorial Park right now where we're going to be demolishing the existing building and pool and rebuilding. That hopefully will be actually starting construction by early next year. And I will be back with more detailed projects and information about what we do, but that's kind of an overview. So with that, if there's any questions, I could answer them for you. Otherwise, I'll look forward to being back and talking with you all more soon. Nice to meet you all.
So, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Director Hawk, for having us. So my name is George Acevedo, Parks Service Superintendent. I oversee the maintenance of the parks. So after Susie's team plans it, builds it, finds the money, hands it over to me, then take care of it, get it from there, handle the day-to-day. Everything from trash, everything that's green, growing, the grass, artificial, the turf, the artificial fields, the football fields, soccer fields, the soccer complex, the Santa Ana Bowl. So the lakes, the bike trails. So anything that's out there in the parks, my team maintains. We have a combination of in-house staff, and we work with various contractors to maintain our spaces clean, green, and safe. We do, I do oversee the security company who is assisting us now maintaining our parks safe. I encourage all you guys to download the My Santa Ana app. That's probably the best way to get ahold of my staff. It goes directly to their desk on a day-to-day. So if anytime you see anything from graffiti, trash, debris, something that's probably, oh, it's not maintained correctly, even if you have questions, doubts, the My Santa Ana app is the best tool for you guys to get ahold of my team. We'll either respond via the app with, you know, a solution, pictures, or let you know, you know what, we'll pass it on to Susie's team so hopefully find some capital dollars to then make that improvement. Let's see what else. So yeah, we support the recreation team. A lot of the aquatics programs, we oversee the pool, the pool maintenance, making sure that's maintained, the restrooms. So, you know, we do a lot of services that keep the day-to-day life of a park going. So with that, Madam Secretary, when I'm as George, the best way to get ahold of us is the My Santa Ana app. Any questions? Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you both. Now, I'd like to bring up, he's actually one of the two that our team has. He is our Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, but his working title is the Santa Ana Zoo Director, Ethan Fisher.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners. I could briefly talk about the recreation side. You'll meet Tim Pagano, who's my counterpart at a future meeting, so I can briefly talk about recreation, and then I'll talk about the zoo as well. Or you didn't talk about recreation. I can do it? Oh, sorry. So the Recreation Division is, they provide quality-of-life services for the community in lots of different ways, and it's pretty broad what they do. There's two senior centers in the city, so there's programming and services for seniors. I know there's meal distribution at the senior centers, lots of different programs, including transportation, to go on trips, to get groceries. All of that is through the senior centers. There's also a multitude of recreation centers where there's programming for, after-school programming for all different ages. There are programming for adults. If you want to take a Zumba class or a yoga class, you could do that at one of the recreation centers. There's also a great sports program throughout the Recreation Division. And the newest thing that just rolled out, well, two summers ago, is the Aquatics Division brought back, was brought back into the city and have had like many, many different swim trainings and swimming programs. And that's where the newly-built Memorial Center, Aquatic Center, when it gets finished, will be a home base for the aquatics program. Additionally, the Recreation Division does community events, smaller events in the centers, and then really big events, like what just happened last weekend with Fiesta de Patrías. That was all coordinated by Parks and Recreation. They also handle permits for field rentals or field reservations. If you want to have soccer, you're having a birthday party at one of the parks, you can go through Parks and Recreation, the Recreation Division for that. Film permits. There's also a community engagement team, which has the Cultura magazine. I see it sitting there, just came out. And that magazine provides lots of information of what's going on in the city, things that are going on with the Recreation Division, the zoo, and the library. And then sometimes other community resources are in there. And what else am I forgetting about recreation?
Man, you're doing great.
Okay, so that's broadly what the Recreation Division does. You encounter the team all over the city in all different aspects. And they work broad hours from the morning to late at night, covering all the different services that we provide. Then, more directly, what I'm involved in is the zoo and the Santiago Creek Eco Center. At the zoo, our mission is to connect the community and empower them to save wildlife in wild spaces. And the way we do that is through the programming that we have at the zoo, the outreach we do. And then now, we're excited, I'll talk a minute about the Eco Center, which is a small nature center that Santa Ana built. I think it was around 2008, 2009, the center was built. It's a little bit down from Discovery Cube and Main Place Mall, right in Santiago Park. And we're in the process of putting all new exhibits in that center that will talk about the Santa Ana River watershed. So that's where we sit. It'll talk about the unique wildlife that we have here and the unique plants, a little bit of the history of how this area has developed. And then we will have, we've already started doing programs out of the center, but we'll greatly expand the programming that we're doing there. I know last Saturday, they just had an art program, and we do creekside storytime. But there'll be lots more engagement. Hopefully, at the beginning of the year, that's when the new exhibits will get installed. And there will be a couple live animal displays, too. Not many, just a snake. And then there'll be an aquarium terrarium when you walk in that will have native turtles and hopefully some native fish. At the zoo, we have some events. I'll transition back to the zoo. We have some events coming up that you might be interested in or know people that are interested. The next big one is Boo at the Zoo. That's two different weekends at the end of October. There are free tickets available for Santa Ana residents. You have to go onto the website, and there's a ticketing page. And that's where you could reserve the Santa Ana resident tickets. But there are free resident tickets. Otherwise, I think it's $25 a person. It is geared towards younger kids and families. It's ticketed as a merry, not scary Halloween experience. So they'll look for that. We also just recently had a really big event with Santa Ana Unified School District. I don't know if any of you attended that, but that was the College and Career Readiness Fair. And had about 3,000 to 4,000 Santa Ana Unified students and families coming to learn about college options. And I think there were about 100, 100 different colleges that had tables at that event. So that just happened. Have a lot of different projects under construction right now. And yeah, looking towards the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions about recreation or the zoo. I got off easy.
All right, like I said, Ethan said, my other, our team's other Deputy Director is Tim Pagano. But it's his birthday today, so he's out celebrating with family. So we graciously let him have the day off. But he's great. He'll be here at the next one. And, you know, if you guys do see him, make sure we let him know, happy belated birthday. But great part of the team, Ethan, great part of the team. And like I said, Brian and everybody else that, you know, what we do. And like Ethan mentioned, our newest Cultura, which I gave you all, is out. And we all worked together to put this magazine out, all of our agencies, so. Yeah, that's our, that's our team. That's our big old world team right there, so thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Hawk Scott. Is there a motion to approve agency reporting during Youth Commission Meetings?
I make a motion to approve agency reporting during Youth Commission Meetings.
I second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Benitez, second by Commissioner Munoz. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct roll call vote?
Yes, motion by Vice Chair Benitez, seconded by Youth Commissioner Munoz to approve agency reporting during Youth Commission Meetings. Youth Commission Member Pham?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Paradias?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Youth Commission Member Munoz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benitez?
Yes.
And Chair Mafavon?
Yes.
The vote is six ayes, zero nays. That motion carries.
Now, we will move on to items five through seven of the business calendar. I will turn it over to Youth Commissioner Paradias to lead the discussion on these items.
Thank you. All right, so for items five and six, these go hand-in-hand. So small libraries throughout the city, this is, for some background information, I feel like we can definitely have more libraries and such, especially like academic centers. Have any of y'all heard of Nicholas Academic Centers? Yes? All right, so if you have or have not, basically Nicholas, oh, shoot. Nicholas Academic Centers, it's this place, it offers tutoring, it offers college-bound experiences that, in my preference, I would like for more youth in the city to have access to. That said, I was looking at the website, the city of Santa Ana website, and I noticed that we have eight locations, two of those being closed, and one of them that is online. So in total, the physical ones that we have right now, which youth in the city could go to, are five total. And that said, after doing research, I did notice that Ward Three and Ward Four do not have many libraries, like, at least like in the middle of them. And so that said, I would like to open this up to discussion, especially Ward Three and Ward Four Commissioners as to maybe any insight that you guys may have or also just in general, how we could proceed with this.
Commissioner Diaz, if I may interject and bring up, bring back up Executive Director Sternberg to give a little bit of a report of what he does and what his team does. And then, after that, we'd be open for questions because there's a lot of stuff he does do that we may not be noticed of and a lot of things he has in the process of what we're doing.
Yes, all right.
Thank you for the question and opening up this discussion. Yeah, so I purposely didn't say a lot about our capital projects that we currently have going on because I figured we would talk about them right here. So yes, we absolutely do need more libraries, and we are working on that right now. We got some great projects going on. The first, the first project that we're working on is, of course, a full renovation and restoration of our main library right here in the Civic Center. That is a large, large, in total, 30-plus-million-dollar project, of which about $19 million is going directly towards construction to revitalize and make our main library here in Santa Ana one of the best in the county, if not the state. And it will be that. It just takes a little bit of time to get that project off the ground, but we should see construction starting within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, by the end of September, we'll be having a contractor mobilizing and starting to get that underway. That is going to bring in new spaces into that building, maker labs for all ages, including teens and youths, more opportunities to engage in STEM programming, more opportunities to connect with community, to allow teens and youth to, you know, have a safe place after school, just to hang out, play games, use arcade, you know, use arcade machines. Because libraries just aren't about shush and quiet and books. They're really about, you know, being a community hub where kids and people of all age, including teens, can connect and youth can connect and relate, right, to what we experience and what we go through in our lives every day. And the library is a part of that. We're really that community anchor. So that's the first project that we're going to be embarking on. The second one, speaking to, you know, not enough libraries, right? We don't have too much here, right? And we want more of that. So a couple of years ago, we rolled out our first bookmobile that we've had in quite some time. I believe we used to have, we used to have a bookmobile back in the, in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s. But sometime in the early 2000s, around 2006 or '07, the bookmobile program was canceled, right? And we no longer had a bookmobile. We brought that back while I was here. So we currently have a vehicle out there right now. It's called our Knowledge Mobile. Some of you guys might have seen that around the city. We go to schools, many SAUSD schools, and we rotate our sites, right, quarterly. We're choosing new schools to go to, new parks to go to, new community centers to go to. It's meant to serve new senior centers to go to, so it serves all ages, right? We also have another bookmobile coming in 2025 that's going to be much larger. This one that we currently have is like a van. This one, this one that's coming next year is going to be big food truck size. So it's going to have more opportunities for us to be able to get out there all throughout the community, especially to those areas that we don't have a lot of physical locations nearby, right? And our bookmobiles aren't just a place to check out books, to check out games, to check out movies, right? They're also places where we do programming right on-site. So for example, like our main library is closed right now because we're about to kick off a big renovation of that building. We have our bookmobile out on the weekends, on Saturdays, right across the street. And of course, our calendar, so you can see exactly where our bookmobile is going to be. It's all on our website. We put it out on our social media. So please connect with us on our website, on our, through our social media. You'll learn all about our, as well, I'll be giving updates to you guys, you know, here at the commission meetings. So you'll keep sort of abreast of all the new things that are coming through the bookmobile or through our programs, through our services, as well as updates on how our construction is going and how our facilities are coming along, right? So look for a new bookmobile. It's going to be out, programs, more services, all throughout the city. We are also going to be opening a new library, a small, a smaller facility, about 2,500 square feet. But it's going to have a larger outside area, and that is through a partnership with our Delhi Center. That one is actually going to be going to our City Council for approval at the next City Council meeting on September 17th. And if approved, we will then get started on that project as well. That is going to be our first library, I think, ever in the South. That is going to be our first uh library, I think, ever in the south part of the city. We've never had a lot of services down in the southern part. So this library is going to be in the Delhi neighborhood, like I said, through our, through our partnership with the Delhi Center, uh, which is a non-for-profit, a great non-for-profit community center in the city. We're going to build a library inside there. It's kind of, kind of have a storefront style mall entrance. You're going to come in the building and it'll have a glass front entrance, sliding door. So it's really going to feel like its own space, separate from the community center, but it's going to be a part. It's going to be a part of the community center inside. We're also building a whole outside area that's going to have, since the inside is small, it's going to have more tables, more, more chairs out there, Wi-Fi access out there. It's going to have places for kids and younger ones to play. It's going to be an additional space for people to study, get on, uh, use their laptop, attend a program out there. We're going to have a small programming space where staff can go out there and do programs for people of all ages, kids, teens, youth, seniors. We'll be doing all sorts of stuff outside to sort of expand on a more limited-sized space that we have available inside. But it's still going to have, it's going to be a full branch in that sense. It's going to have all the programs and services that you would see at our other locations. We're also doing a renovation on our New Hope Library. Uh, this is one of our existing libraries right now that is currently open. That's on the west part of the city. The whole facility is going to be um renovated. Um, much like our main library, it is going to get all new building mechanicals. It's going to get new flooring. It's going to um be outfitted with a STEM learning lab that we're calling the Innovation Center to offer all those high-tech things that you would see at other libraries across the county or the state. So we're, we're getting up to speed uh right now. I can assure all of you. Um, in terms of, you know, e- expanding um services beyond that, what's that? Yeah, well, yep, that's what I'm getting to. Um, Hawk has just reminded me of a couple of other things. So we, we do have um, in, in terms of more recent expansions, we have teen time locations too. At both our um El Salvador Community Center and at our Garfield Community Center. And these are really meant to be after-school spaces where um, you know, teens can come in. And they're really just meant for youth, right? And it's, it's, it's a place where you can do homework and study, but it's a place where you can also um, you know, work on your homework if you need to. It's a place where you can play video games if you want to. It's a place where you can learn how to um use a sewing machine. So many, many things. What Hawk was referring to over here is our Jerome Park Library, which is not really a library, but it is a um outdoor public library. It's not a physical library in that it has four walls and a, you know, brick and mortar. It is a sort of a brainchild that we came up with here, my staff and I, um, at the Santa Ana Public Library, to provide all the services that you would see in a traditional library, brick and mortar building, but outside. And what this is going to entail is a large kiosk machine that they sell that is about fourteen feet long and about seven feet high, holds hundreds of materials, about four hundred plus uh items can be held in there. You use your library card and you can check out books and everything else right from the machine, right? Um, so it's self-serve. Um, but the great thing about it is we're not just putting this kiosk down and say, okay, check out a book or check out a movie and go home. We're going to build tables out there. We're going to put tables out there. We're going to have Wi-Fi out there. We're going to have educational um exhibits and a story walk that relate to all the new drought tolerant landscaping and planting that we're going to put in the front part of Jerome Park, which is right off McFadden. So you'll see this as you drive, drive down McFadden or you walk down the street. You'll see a large structure, kind of like, almost like a bus shelter kind of structure, but it's going to be really colorful. It's going to say "Library" out on the front of it, right? And inside there is where this kiosk is going to be and where you can go and you can check out items. But the great thing about it is that you don't have to just take it home. You can be right there. You can use the park as your library. So you can sit down, you can read a book, you can also get on your laptop. But the great thing is you can attend a program too, right? So we're going to build a programmatic space, a space where my staff can come out and do programs out in the park as well, just like what we're doing at the Delhi Center. So a lot of what I'm doing here at the library is not just thinking about libraries as, you know, buildings with walls that you have to go walk into, but think about the, the idea that libraries can be anywhere. They can be outside. They can be at the park. They can be, you know, wherever we want to create this type of environment where you have access to the things that you would have in a traditional library. So that is what um our Jerome Park um facility is going to be all about. And it's going to serve uh the community, much like any of our brick and mortar uh buildings would. So yes, um, that is one of our other um, uh, larger projects. So we are expanding, you know, and we are getting the, the, you know, this idea of academic centers throughout the city, but we're not just academic centers. We're also, in many ways, like our, I call them our cousins here in parks, we're also recreation. We're, we're not formal education. You know, formal education, I think, happens at school, right? We're, we're that in, we're, we're education, but we're informal. We're that place outside of home or, or school where you guys come to learn, but also to have fun, to connect with your peers, to do something different that you might not do in school. And to um, and I think to learn something new every day. So um, with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions about how, you know, we're expanding our facilities, how we're trying to get more out there. Um, one thing I forgot to mention is we also have an online tutoring service. Um, and we, we have it. It's not like, you know, a, a software program that we just purchased and, you know, put on the website. We actually have a program at the library where we hire people from the community. We hire staff, right? And their position is tutor. And every day we do online tutoring. So we used to do it in person, but after the pandemic, we found that people really liked to just log in online from the convenience of their own home students. And we go from like, you know, from all grade levels, from elementary school all the way through high school. And they can um, you know, you sign up right through our website, you log on through Zoom, and we have a staff member who will help uh kids, youth, you know, all grades with their reading, with their writing assignments, with their history homework, with their math assignments. And we have our own staff doing that every day. So you don't necessarily have to go to an academic center to learn. All you have to do is log in from wherever you might have an interconnection, internet connection and a tablet computer or a laptop. And you can get, you know, help um from a tutor uh at the Santa Ana Public Library. That is one of our city staff members. So that's just another great way to, to connect and be able to get that extracurricular help, if that's what you were also referring to. Yes?
Um, so I kind of wanted to ask about the different teen programs that you kind of mentioned briefly. Um, I do see in here that there are programs for teens to kind of have access to volunteer opportunities and um develop their STEM uh knowledge.
Yep.
And also converse with other teens. And I wanted to ask if there's a specific program that's geared more towards career readiness for teens and like um kind of helping teens get exposed to professional opportunities, like internships and stuff like that?
Yeah, we do have those. And I can bring back, you know, at the next meeting, some information about, you know, the internships that are available. I don't have it with me, but I would say this. I would say especially at our El Salvador uh Community Center and Garfield, those teen time programs are really all about that. Uh, the staff um that, that we have really tries to, to develop, um, you know, the youth that come in there to, to make them um, you know, well-rounded citizens. And a lot of that is to, to provide them with opportunities and tell them about different internships that are available. But also just with the programs that we have, the STEM programs, you know, gets people ready for careers in engineering, um, you know, science, um, you know. We, we do so much of that is just built into our, our day-to-day service. But, but I can come back and give you guys some more information about, you know, specific internships. And a lot of those are citywide internship, you know, like the city has our, our SA Youth Interns and things like that. And we, we have these internship programs running all the time in the library. We just jump on that and we want to get kids out to the library. So, you know, um, they can participate in helping plan programs or they can learn kind of what a day in the life of, of a librarian might be. Um, or help them get started on whatever their career goals are. If it's in a STEM field like engineering or chemistry, we, we do a lot of that as well. So yeah. We're really about literacy all around, no matter what you're looking for. If it's financial literacy, if it's civic literacy, if it's, you know, traditional, you know, literacy like reading or if it's the sciences, you know, we really try to have some of everything with, in all of the programs that we do. Are there questions?
Uh, yes. So the main reason why I brought up the academic centers relation to it is because, yes, why I do understand that school is very much for the opportunity to get the work done and such. I do also see that, and this is from personal experience and then also from some classmates' experience, that sometimes some subjects are just harder to like focus on, of course. And of course, that doesn't need to be in like the formal, traditional setting of, oh, go to the library and such. But I think it's rather just, I guess, making it more known of those opportunities because in all honesty, half of what you said, um, I wasn't really aware of. And I think-
No, that's great. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just, in that case, a matter of just really like putting that information out there.
Yeah.
And more in a way that will definitely grasp teens and also parents' attention. So, yeah.
To follow up with that, you mentioned like in one of your future or like pending projects that you want to provide a bigger band like a bookmobile?
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering, like, to follow up with what she said, to make it more known, could service, transportational service be provided to take the, to take teens to those academical centers or?
So when, when our, what our bookmobile tries to do, uh, our knowledge mobile is we try to get across, we try to get out. The whole idea behind the service is to come to where you are, right? So not to get you there or have to make you, you people in the community travel, but to get out to the park that's one block from your house or the community center that's, you know, uh, three blocks away or you're the school that you attend. It's, the idea is to come to you. So um, that's why we, with our current vehicle, our current Knowledge Mobile, we change up sites frequently. So quarterly we'll be at, we'll have a list of, you know, let's say fourteen different locations that we're going to for three months. And then we'll switch up some of them, you know, some of the ones that we really have a lot of interest, we'll hold on to because a lot of people really want us to be at, you know, this particular community center, that park or that school. But we'll try to go to other locations as well and say, hey, we only got, you know, we weren't, we didn't get that many people at this park, so we're going to try a different park next time or we're going to try a different school. Not only does that make sure that, that we're getting a good turnout where we're going, but it also ensures, like I've been saying, that we get out across the city. So with this additional vehicle, which is larger, the idea is to be able to have more opportunities for us to come to you and not for you to have to travel or get to us. So my, my hope is that with another vehicle, there's something that you, you don't have to get transportation to. You can, you know, it's, it's right down, it's, you know, it's with, you can walk there. It's two, it's a block away. It's a, right at the corner, you know what I mean? So that's the whole idea um behind the mobile services. The mobile services come, come to you, if that makes sense. And then on top of that, of course, we want to, you know, have more physical locations, have more locations like our Jerome uh Outdoor Library in the park where, you know, it's something where you go to as well, you know. You can come visit us at the library.
Uh, I would like, I don't know if you are all aware of that, like you're saying, like there's like little libraries, that there is a foundation called uh Bora de Oro, which uh made sixty-four little, uh, little libraries. And they asked for volun- volunteers in communities to have it like set up in their neighborhoods. And there is, there is a website where you could see exactly where all the little libraries are on littlefreelibrary.org. And I think that maybe we could maybe partner with them or maybe do something like what they are doing.
Yeah, um, so that is a great organization. It's called littlefreelibraries.org. So the whole idea behind littlefreelibraries.org is, is to encourage residents to um, you know, build these little mail, they're, they're like mailboxes, right? Yeah. They're like these little mailboxes. And typically the way you see those, and, and we have promoted these, this, these types of things before. But what I like to do and the way that service I think is best rolled out is connecting people to the organization. I think you were saying it here, Commissioner. Connect people to the organization so they can learn how to start one of these in their neighborhood. Or a lot of times you'll see them in people's front yards. You know, you'll walk down the block and you'll see like, oh, that's a, like a, that looks like a big mailbox there and you get close to it. And there's just, you know, people put their, you know, their, their, the books they've already read at their house or they'll put magazines in there and they'll have them out. And the idea is just like, hey, if you walk, you're walking on the street and um, you know, you peek in that, the, the mailbox and somebody's, you know, right out in somebody's front yard or something like that, you could say, oh, that looks like a good book and you can grab it out. And beyond that, the idea is that, hey, if you take something, then you would give something back to that person. So like, hey, I'm going to take the book, but maybe tomorrow I'll come back and I'll put something in the mailbox. So it kind of, you know, it, it kind of perpetuates the, 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 sort of the community service of having the little free library in your yard. So yeah, that's definitely um something along with, you know, what you were saying about, you know, promoting more. We, you know, of course, check us out. We're on all the social media platforms. Check us out on our city, uh, city website. We also promote directly to uh Santa Ana Unified School District through Peachjar, which hopefully goes out to all, I believe goes out to all the students, um, you know, periodically as well too. So the library, we're always communicating our programs and what's, what's going on. But yes, we can, we can definitely promote some more of that, especially those little free libraries to make sure that the, um, you know, the community knows about it and says, hey, I can, I can connect with this organization and, and start my own little free library. Because that's what it's all about, that they really want like the communities to kind of take it on upon themselves and the, the residents to say, hey, I'd like to make a little free library in my, in my front house, in my front yard or by my house. So yeah, that's great input. Thank you.
Um, going back to the advertisement thing that you mentioned, I think a good way, even very simple, would be like having like flyers and such made and distributed across like different schools and including not just the SAUSD schools, but also the independent charter schools?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also them as well because I know that for at least my school, middle, college, high school, an effective way that many students get resources in the community or even just in Orange County in general is through the flyers that are put up on our bulletin boards that we have on our building. So that said, I feel like that would also be very effective because some students, I don't know, they may be bored at lunch and go up to the bulletin board. Like that's happened at my school. Yeah. So I think that would also be a very effective way.
That's great feedback. Thank you.
Um, I know there is already like the Jerome Center and you mentioned how that's like kind of very accessible to a lot of people. It's at a park. And from personal experience, my family does go to the park a lot. I have a little brother and he's constantly playing in the playground. My mom actually found him a baseball league to play just because we happen to go at the park, you know? And I think we could have more libraries like this at the park, at parks, uh, being more accessible. Just like how with flyers, how a lot of people can come across this really easily. I think having more libraries or little centers at parks can really help like promote this sort of free library and allowing people to have this experience without having to go to a certain area because there's no library available for them.
Yeah, I, I, I absolutely concur. And that's why, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to get out there and do more of that in the community, for sure, for sure. I agree. Questions? Thank you all. Turn it back over to Director Scott.
Okay, so I would like to take, um, a few minutes to like discuss some, some potential holiday events that we could host.
Sorry, there was one more item for social media.
Oh, social media. Oh, sorry, uh, Commissioner Pera Diaz, can you lead a business calendar item number seven?
Yes, of course. All right, so for business number seven, social media engagement with the youth in Santa Ana, I noticed on Instagram that a couple years ago, there was an Instagram account, and I think we could bring that back to make ourselves more known throughout the city, because right now, even sometimes when I mention the Santa Ana Youth Commission to some of my classmates, they're like, what's that? So that said, I do think that if, through social media, or going back to like the idea that I had from earlier, like creating flyers and such, we can make ourselves well better known, and even at some point, hopefully get more comments in, or even have more people turn up in person, so, yeah. But of course, I do know that maybe that may or may not be a violation with the Brown Act, and I do wanna make sure that nothing is violated and such.
Yeah, no, that's a great thing, you know, maybe in the past, you know, social media really wasn't well-known and stuff like that, but as it's advanced through the years and stuff like that, you know, you know, things have happened, and with, with us, I know with our social media accounts, we've kind of put it all together with what we do, so, but that's something I could ask our PIO, if it's possible to do that. I don't have that answer for you, and I know when we were listening to our COA officer, they were speaking about stuff like that, so that's something I can get back to you guys on, if that's even possible. Um, but like I said, we do encourage you guys to, you know, follow us what we have right now, for our Parks Recreation, you know, Instagram, we're on X, and we're on, you know, Facebook, and if you guys have seen, you know, we put on a really good show, and our community engagement team, you know, led by Cory Lance, has done a phenomenal job, if, if you guys have seen, you know, just the coverage of our Fiesta Spatios this weekend was unheard, I mean unbelievable, um, we were getting comments from all over the place, so I will definitely look into that for you.
Thank you.
Um, can I add on? Um, so I know that a lot of students, um, get their information from social, social media, so one thing that I think we can definitely, um, do is to contact those social media platforms, like the accounts, and then advertise with them, um, different activities involving youth in the city of Santa Ana, and then they can then broadcast that to the students that follow those social, social media accounts, um, and it's like a great way to get the word out for, um, activities.
I would like to add to what she said, um, I think it would be a good idea if we like send all those flyers and information. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to send all the informational flyers to, for the schools to post it on their, um, on their accounts, because I feel like most students don't really like follow informational, like educational accounts, so we just tell the schools, if you post it on your, on your school website, or it will be easier access for the students.
Yeah, like I said, that's something I'll look into, and, you know, we're able to post, you know, other agency stuff, sure, but again, we may not be able to, but that's something we can look into, a lot of things we do post is, you know, stuff we do or people we partner with, you know, and when you guys see all our posts, just, you know, so people know it's, it's legit and it's real, and, you know, it's something that's gonna be safe and fun for all ages, but again, I can look into that as well.
I'd like to add on, well, I believe that we could like advertise on social media, but I was thinking that maybe we could do like maybe a segment where we could have youth have inputs, like just ask questions, and I was thinking that maybe it could be like, ask why the commissioner guy? Where they could ask questions, like about events, like different kinds of, uh, things we offer, like at the teen times, community centers, like all that stuff.
I can definitely get with our community engagement team and see if we can do that with you all, it would be kind of fun, so, I think we can do it.
Yeah, just following up with that, maybe just explaining what a youth commissioner is to the schools, because I know from explaining to my, my friends or my classmates, they're like, oh, what, what is that? And then it's, it's so crazy, because I had to find out about being a youth commissioner through my sister, who saw it on a post of, I believe Jonathan, or Jesse, but yeah, just spreading it.
No problem, I will get with my team on that, and I think, I kind of like the idea of, I'm a youth commissioner, is what I do, and maybe throw some questions out out there, I do that for the public, so, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. Uh, I would now like to discuss item number eight on the agenda, regarding some holiday events that we could possibly host. The first thing I would like us to consider is that I think families of youth would appreciate a fun, what would it would like to see a type of Halloween event? Because families of youth would appreciate a fun and safe environment for their kids to go trick-or-treating in. I was thinking that this event could take place in a park, community center, or even here at City Hall. We could also make it a trunk-or-treat, which in case you don't know, is when people decorate their cars in different themes, which makes it more fun for the kids. And I would believe that maybe, because this has been a event that's been similar to, uh, SAPD, they have hosted a kind of event like this, and that maybe we could partner with them? And about the trunk-or-treats, I think that to make it more, people to more participate in it, I think we should make it maybe a little contest, like the best person with the best theme gets whatever. And I think the thing that would make this successful, and people really willing to participate, is that if the city would provide the candy, because candy's expensive, and people don't wanna pay that much for candy, especially during the season. And that we could also have our Santa Ana vehicles, the, the rec mobile and the knowledge mobile there, to hand, help hand out candy as well. I would like to open this for discussion.
Um, so while you were talking about that, you just gave me a little idea. So I know at my previous schools, we've had this thing where it's like a Halloween maze, basically the students construct it, yada, yada, blah, da, and students go in, they get scared, and that said, I think that would maybe actually be really great for teens. Me personally, I feel like that would be something that would gravitate a lot of our attention, especially if you're into like horror type of stuff, obviously not something extreme, as obviously it's, would still be for like families and such, but I think that'd be a great addition to what you were mentioning.
And for the teens, I remember when I was younger, there was this little, I'm not sure what it's called, but they would have little games, like tossing, potato sack tossing, and then the cups, and then the, what's it called, where you jump in a bag and you race? But yeah, those, so I think we could have little, little games like that.
Okay, just so like, um, I'm understanding, you know, we do do things like that during Halloween, a lot of our rec centers have events, um, I know the library does a number of events for Halloween, and as well as Deputy Director Fisher said, you know, we do have our boo at the zoo, uh, that maze you were talking about, we actually had one last year at Jerome, and it was a blast, we had a little haunted house maze they went through and stuff like that, and it was attended by thousands, you know, it was a great event. So we do do Halloween events, we do pop them out like there, and all our rec centers do something, but I will get with my team to see if we could, you know, like I said, get more promotion out there, and see if we could open up little things like that, and how we could possibly, you know, do some more Halloween stuff.
What if for this year, okay, I know this sounds a little bit big, but what if we double it? Because if it was successful last year, maybe put one on one side of the city, and then one on the other side?
I can get with my team and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
For me, I just think it's a, well, he said it was a good idea to like give out free candy, because I know some, some parents don't really give their kids candy, so.
And like I said, you do talk to some of these families, you know, encourage them to, you know, swing by our rec centers, you know, especially around Halloween time, you know, we do have some out there for the kids.
All right, uh, the, the last thing I would like us to consider is a free pictures of Santa event. The reason why I think we should have this event is because I believe that there is a need in our community, because not a lot of, not everyone can afford to take pictures of Santa. I think we could provide an opportunity for people to take pictures with, pictures with their own phones and cameras, and we provide the Santa. Hawk, I saw you last year in your Santa hat, and I think you would make a great Santa. I would now like it to open this up for discussion.
Here, I'll give you all some feedback, um, so for the past couple of years, you know, we did have our winter village here at City Hall, and what you did, we did have Santa there on weekends with Mrs. Claus, and people were able to come and take pictures and stuff like that. Um, unfortunately, this year, due to some budget cuts, our whole winter village thing did get cut, but however, we are looking to see what we can do. Um, we can probably do that over at Plaza Navarreña, that will be happening in November, we can try to get Santa there for the big tree lighting and everything like that. And then we see, we, uh, work with our community partners, uh, some of the events we do do over holidays, see if we can have, uh, um, possibly some Santa there. I know the ducks have come in the past, and, you know, that famous picture of mine you were talking about, thank you.
I would also like to add that I know that there is a need for these pictures, because SAPD hosted, uh, a picture with, with the Easter Bunny, and they posted the, the flyer out twenty-four hours before the event actually commenced, and I went there myself, and I would say that there was easily over two hundred people there attended with just a twenty-four hour notice. So I believe that it would be that peep that shows me that there is a need, so I believe that we could do this, and I know that pictures of Santa cost from, anywhere from twenty dollars to fifty dollars. And if it does get like, if we can get a big, like lots of people going there, we, maybe we, we'll open it to registration only, because it could easily get super packed.
I will definitely look into it with my team and see what we can do, like I said, we did do breakfast with Santa last year, we did do a pancake thing last year, you know, so there are a lot of things we do do over the holidays, and like I said, coming this holiday season, which is upon us, we'll see what we can do to, you know, maybe spread it around, you know, to other parks, and see what we can do with the, uh, previous events we've had here.
I think Hawk would make a great Santa.
Now we will move into, onto the informational items section of the agenda, I will turn it over to Executive Director Hawk Scott to review the upcoming citywide events.
All right, everybody, so just a, a quick thing, and I know, um, I guess, Brian, is there anything you wanna talk about, I'm coming up with you guys event-wise, are you good? Okay, um, he'll give you that as it gets closer, but I'll give you some of the stuff we're coming up. As Director Fisher said, we do have the Boo at the Zoo coming up, um, October nineteenth and twentieth, and twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, but before that, uh, we are having our international older adult celebration on September twenty-seventh, which is exclusively for our older active adults, fifty-five and plus, and they do have to register, and basically what we do on that is out at Jerome Park, behind the Southwest Senior Center, basically it's, it's a party for the seniors. Uh, this will be our second one, we're doing it, um, last, and it is during the day, starts at nine, and they, um, it's, it's all for them, it's to celebrate life, they, we have vendor booths out there, we have food, we have everything out there, as we would have a Fiesta Spatios, but for targeted just straight at our fifty-five plus, you know, so, and I, I think I've mentioned to you guys before, I know it's got to be tough for you guys to, you know, head out there because of school and stuff, but, you know, we will obviously out there just to interact with our seniors, and eventually get you guys out to our senior seniors, because they do a lot of great programming out there. Um, after that, um, coming in Octo-, um, we have our Mid-Autumn Festival, which will be October fifth, and that will be out at Centennial Park, this will be our third one. First one, we're out at Rosita Park, did really, really well, we had about three, four thousand people showed up. Uh, last year, we had to move it out to Centennial Parks, it got really big, and we had a great crowd, about maybe five, six thousand people that showed up, so, um, we're hoping for a great turnout this year, and that'll be again on, um, October fifth. And then other than that, like I mentioned earlier, we do have our Plaza Navarreña coming, which is, you set your calendars for November twenty-third, out there at Playa Cañangor, uh, which you guys that did ICU out there, it was where we had, um, our Fiesta Spatios right next to the Worser House, and where our, um, I can't say to you guys, but it's where we had our pure garden, but you guys, y'all are not old enough, so, um, that's what we have coming up event-wise, and, um, I believe we have our Orchids, did Ethan already take off? We have our Orchid Sparric, uh, I believe it's this weekend, too, out there, so it's something the zoo partners with, but I can get you guys some events like that. And then just further on down the line, we will have our Tet Lunar New Year Festival on January twenty-fifth, out at Centennial Park, uh, this will be our second one, um, it is a great event, uh, we had fireworks last year, and it was a great celebration, the community really, really showed out, so those are the things we have coming up, um, and I know last, uh, last couple of days, I did see you guys out there, uh, with us at Fiesta Spatios, so thank you all for coming out there and hanging out with us, and just having a good time, um, I know our city council members were very happy to see you all out there, and it's something I told them, I'm gonna get you guys very involved in what we do, so thank you for that. And I will leave it to any questions if you guys may have on our upcoming events, but that is what we have upcoming on our events.
Um, so for the Mid-Autumn Festival and that festival, um, I would expect that these festivals do need volunteers, and I wanna like, kind of deliver these volunteer opportunities to students in G G U S D, as well as the Santa Unified School District, so who would I reach out to and coordinate with?
You can reach out to me, and I can turn you guys over to our special events team, that can get you guys involved, as well as our partner, we, we work with for the events.
Okay, got it.
Now, is there any youth commissioner, commission member comments? Youth commission member fam?
No.
Youth commission member Pera Diaz?
If there's a comment that we have, right, correct?
So this is the, the portion of the, uh, meeting where you guys, this is your time to talk about anything, this is commissioner comments, so y'all can, you know, if you wanna come back there, you know, you can talk about anything, like say, hey, this is coming up for our youth, or, you know, hey, thank you Parks and Rec for something, if y'all want, you know, stuff like that, you know, stuff like that.
Okay, well, oh, sorry. Um, that said, I think this was a very effective meeting, I think we all very much spoke with our ideas that we had and such, and, yeah, thank you, everyone, this was very effective.
Youth commission member Munoz?
Um, yes, I just wanna say, um, yes, this was an effective meeting, and I wanted to thank all the speakers who we had today, I know a lot of them pretty much already left. As you can see, but it was a really, a really cool experience having over six people here, and that was a really... And that was a really, really, really cool thing for all of us, I bet.
Yeah, like I said, you know, I'm, I'm very proud to have six of you guys here, and, you know, we're trying to work on that last seven, want to have a full, uh, youth commission, and that was been one of our goals, and, you know, council's very proud of what we're doing, so, you know, thank you all, so.
Youth commission member- Youth commission member Hernandez?
Oh, that's my mic. Oh. I think this meeting was very interesting. We shared a lot of ideas for our youth and it was really effective. And yeah, thanks to everybody that came.
Vice Chair Benitez?
No comments.
I would just like to say that I'd like to thank all the people who have spoken that are mayor here or may not be here for sharing us all this valuable information. And I'd like to thank Executive Director Hawk Scott for helping us another wonderful meeting today. And come on, you know you want to be Santa. Executive Director Hawk Scott, do you have any closing comments?
Again, I just, I just want to thank you guys for being here. You know, again, I know, you know, you guys have in your young age, you got a lot of things going on with school and homework and, you know, extracurricular activities. You know, I know we've got some athletes up there. So it's great to see you guys excel. I know what you guys do in volleyball and tennis and whatever you do, Wyatt. But I do love what you guys, you know, discuss. I do love your ideas you're putting out there, you know, and bringing our team here so you can actually put faces to our, you know, our library director, to our zoo director, to the people that work on our parks, the maintenance, our park planning, because it all works together and goes all hand in hand to what we do for the community. So, you know, thank you guys for the great discussion and all that. And like I said, I'll keep emailing you guys and hopefully we can get you guys out to the events. And some of the guys that talked about it will talk about my team. So again, thank you for being here and that's all I have.
I'd like to say one more thing. I'd like to thank you, Hawk, for, because I was there at Fiesta de Patricio. And I saw you running everywhere, getting stuff done. I'd like to thank you for the, just the, making the event just amazing.
I thank you for that, but it was a whole team effort. My coworkers, my colleagues from the city of Santa Ana, you know, Parks Recreation, library was out there doing their thing, Santa Ana P.D., you know, CDA, planning and building. We all worked together, traffic, Public Works, you know? So all of us did a, a part to make it happen. And, you know, what's great about that event is, and that's something you guys should be proud of, that was produced by the city of Santa Ana Parks Recreation Department working with other agencies in our department. You know, there was no outside company hide. It was us that put that together. And our team did a phenomenal job and working together and work with other agencies and having security. And just some preliminary numbers I may share with you. Over the two-day weekend, we estimated there are about 80 to 85,000 people that came and visited downtown Santa Ana, saw some great music, you know, saw some of the shops we have, did some shopping, had some food and stuff like that. And the most important, I went to the carnival, had some fun carnival rides and just had a good time. And that's something we were looking forward to and just having people feel safe out there. And that's something we're very proud of. And so thank you for the comments. But, you know, it was a huge team effort. So thank you.